Good evening, we'd like to call the meeting to order. We welcome you to Davis School District Board of Education this evening and we welcome the people we have in person as well as the audience that we have joining us through the internet. We'd like to start our evening with, I'm going to share the introductory comments about public comment in a few minutes, but we're going to start with a virtual presentation with a student performance. If Ms. Tracy Robbins is here, I'd invite her to come up and introduce that for us.
And members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to invite you to share in this virtual experience of Jordan Hicks, an eighth grade student at Central Davis Junior High School. She is performing what's called "Bee's Knees." It's written by a former Vumont High School teacher by the name of Melanie Shore. Her teacher at Central Davis Junior High is a lady named Ms. Christine Wolf. Please enjoy.
Thank you. That was amazing to hear. Jordan did a fabulous job and we're so appreciative of Ms. Wolf and her work at Central Davis Junior High with the jazz band and all the other music groups that she leads, so thank you. We'll proceed now with our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Cheryl Phipps from our board.
Thank you. Y'all please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick, a couple of quick notes for our business meeting tonight. We wanted to recognize Mr. Brent Straight, who's visiting with us. Brent was just elected to the State Board of Education and will be representing a big portion of our district, so we appreciate his commitment to service. Brent was a teacher at Bonneville High School and so he has a great background in teaching and leading and we look forward to working with him in the future. I also wanted to excuse President Robinson this evening due to some family issues, so we'll go ahead and proceed with our program from here. The next item on the agenda is the recognition and we're thrilled tonight to recognize Ms. Kristen Whitlock from Davis High School and I'll invite Dr. Dan Linford to proceed with that.
Thank you, Vice President Mumford, honorable board members, Superintendent Newey, it's good to be here. It really is my pleasure and it's an honor to represent some folks tonight, so I have happy duties. The first person we will recognize tonight is Kristen Whitlock. And I want to honor what was written by some of her peers, but something I mentioned to her before this meeting is what I love about Kristen is she is not a self-promoter. She quietly goes about doing incredible work. As a former colleague and even a principal who worked with Kristen, I can tell you she is the consummate professional. And what I love is, this is not the first time colleagues have reached out to say, "Do you know what this woman is doing? She's incredible." So, let me read some of their words. Kristen was recently awarded a Presidential Citation from the American Psychological Association. Two educators typically receive this prestigious award per year and it has never been awarded to a high school teacher. The award is typically reserved for college professors. Here is a list of some of Kristen's accomplishments. She has led many leadership positions at the AP Psychology Reading. She is a committee member of the Teachers of Psychology in Secondary Schools, or the TOPs. She co-founded the Utah TOPS Annual Training Workshop. She has assisted in doing APA's National Standards for High School Psychology Curricula. And as a side note, a story that just occurred to me, one time I had to have her excused from a district standard where AP teachers had to be trained through the AP Summer Institute and had to explain, "She wrote the materials that we're using to train our teachers." So, incredible. She is a member of the Steering Committee of the National Summit of High School for High School Psychology. She's worked on the APA's introductory psychology initiative training, which drives the teaching and learning of psychology. And she is a published author of many psychology books, book chapters and teaching resources. And her colleagues say this as well, "Kristen's love of teaching is evident every day as she makes a lifelong impact on our students." And this was, she was nominated by Kathy Waller and Angie Leedy. And I can say again, as a former colleague and even as a principal, she wrote me into doing some psychological experiments on her students a couple of times and I thought it was pretty good, right? They were convinced I was coming in and maybe doing some fascism and I don't know, something like that. So, without further ado, we'd like to invite Kristen up and give her an opportunity to introduce who's here with her and maybe say a few words. Thanks.
I didn't know I was going to speak tonight. Mr. Linford, thank you so much. I really appreciate your kind words. And I'd like to introduce my husband McCray Whitlock. He is a teacher at Bonneville Junior High as well. So, we've got a lot of education years behind us and I wouldn't actually be standing here if it weren't for his support, so thank you honey for coming here tonight as well. Well, I didn't know I was actually going to speak, but I will say that, you know, this is my 31st year teaching and I just feel incredibly lucky that I've had the opportunities that I've had. And sometimes when I think that I'm just a high school teacher and I'm just one person, it's kind of been an amazing ride and I've had some really amazing opportunities that I wouldn't be standing here without the collaboration and help of many, many good teachers that have come before me, both when I was in high school and in college that have lifted me up and helped me to get where I need to, as well as my wonderful colleagues. So, anyway, thank you very much for this recognition and I really appreciate your kind words. Thanks again.
Thank you. Ms. Whitlock and Mr. Whitlock, would you join us up at front? Ms. Tanner's going to come up and has a certificate to present. Thank you. We're going to keep Dr. Linford at the podium to do a couple of other recognitions in the athletic area.
Great, thank you. And we'll ask Dr. Wilkie to stay close. I'd like to really turn the microphone over to Dr. Wilkie, who will introduce the folks he has with him. As you well have heard, the Davis High School girls soccer team has won the 6A state championship this year. I will say, as a side note, my daughter is on this team and you know, maybe that's a stretch to a degree, right? We're talking about, my daughter participates on this team and she's JV and I can tell you, from personal experience, I'm impressed with this organization and the work that they do and particularly Coach Sully, who is, you know, a real players coach and some of they respect and they do what he's told. He's, he's, he means business, but he's also someone they can relate to. So, I really appreciate his leadership and his coaching and I'll turn the time over to Greg.
So, it's my honor to introduce a couple of members of our team, the captains and Coach Sully, as we refer to him. If I could just briefly say a couple of things, you know, this has been a fall with some challenges and some adversity. And this team not only faced the adversity that we're facing in our society right now, but had some adversity of their own as a team. A couple of our leaders on the team went down early in the season with torn ACLs and one of those was Ruth Wright, right here, one of our captains. You'd be, I think, amazed to know that she had her ACL torn here just a couple of months ago and here she is, walking around pretty good. Ruth was actually able to start our state championship soccer game just like four weeks, well, eight weeks, I guess, from having torn her ACL. She didn't play for very long, but she was there as one of our captains and led us out. And then our other captain here is Grace Nickel. They both exhibited some great leadership as we were working through the adversity and the challenges of this season. We had a rematch in the title game with American Fork, the same team that we lost to a year ago in the title game. And this time our girls were not to be denied and it was, it was an awesome experience to be a part of. Great leadership, great young people here. And Coach Sully is their mentor and their leader and does an excellent job year in and year out with the program and sure appreciate them, so gonna turn it over to Sully.
Thank you. I'd just like to take this time to thank Dr. Wilkie, the school. We had so much support from the community when we left to Rio Tinto. We had an escort from the fire department and the police officers, which was awesome and I know it's a memory that these girls will remember for the rest of their lives and so, thank you to the community, thank you to the board for this recognition and I couldn't be more proud of a group of girls. I think it's my 13th year here at Davis High Coaching. Been fortunate enough to have done this several times, but I can't remember a season that had more adversity and more things going on, whether injuries, we have COVID and things like that. And so, for them, these girls to overcome all of that and to have the season end the way that it ended, it was really a storybook ending, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. If we could have Coach Sully and Ruth and Grace and Principal Wilkie come on up, we'd love to get a picture and Ms. Gerard has a plaque to present to your team. Okay, and we've got one more state champion group, so Dr. Linford's back up.
Yes, I'd like to welcome and recognize, let me say a word. We celebrate athletics, we support athletics, we devote a lot of resources and time to them because we know that they teach lessons that we can't teach in the classroom and offers incredible experience that we just can't offer in any other situation, particularly in terms of overcoming adversity and rising to a challenge and accepting defeat with grace and some of those things that are just lifelong skills. And so, I want to just as well recognize these two principals who demand a lot and have high expectations for those groups in that guise, that these are important learning experiences. So, without further ado, we'd like to recognize Farmington High School's boys cross-country team for winning the 5A cross-country state championship. Principal Swanson.
Thank you. Vice President Mumford, esteemed members of the school board, it's a great pleasure to be here with you and to recognize our cross-country. They'll spread out across the front here, these are our varsity performers for this year in cross-country. To start off with, I'd just like to say that McCray Whitlock was my mentor when I first started teaching my first year and I feel very fortunate to still have a job. But I was responsible for stealing his wife from Vumont to Davis High School and she is just that great. Would love to recognize these wonderful members of our cross-country team. We have Coach Brower here. One of the great challenges with opening up Farmington High School was coming from such a juggernaut cross-country team that Davis High has been so well-known for and very proud of what Coach Brower's done and what he's established with us. This team, these young men that are here in front of you today, they won the premier invite to start the year. They took the Davis County Championship for the third year in a row. They also are the Region Five Champions for the third year in a row. On top of that, we're very fortunate, they came and they talk about showing up at state. These young men showed up at state and were able to be the back-to-back state champions. Now, to put that into perspective, what that means, in the state of Utah this year, in the 6A classification, we have the number two and number three teams ranked nationally in the entire nation that sit within our state. When you combine the scores from all classifications at the state meet, these young men took first place overall. That includes all classifications, so it's a wonderful accomplishment. They've now been placed 18th in the nation as a cross-country team in high schools and we're just proud of them. Coach Brower will introduce our wonderful runners, but thank you for allowing us to come today.
Thank you and thank you again to the board for having us come here tonight and it's obviously fun to be back from last year and to be here again is a fun opportunity. So, I'm going to start on this side here. We've got Senior Simon Mitchell is one of our captains and Senior Nick Sidaway, another captain. We've got a junior Matthew Nguyen Schwander, junior Henry Prusy, senior Braden Miller. We've got junior Ryan Bennettz, junior Isaac Halverson, sophomore Spencer Bradshaw, junior, one of our captains Tate Martineau, and junior Britton Austin. And this is our cross-country team. Obviously, we've got some seniors here, but a lot of younger kids as well who are ready to step up and fill the shoes of some of these seniors moving on and hope to obviously be back next year if we can, but super proud of these guys for the efforts that they obviously have shown, not only on the course, but they're just great young men that are great examples to the rest of the school and their academics, as well as examples in, I would say, COVID behavior as they have sacrificed a lot of extracurricular activities to make sure that we could have a season and be able to be here tonight and to perform at the state meet. So, super proud of them and their efforts and grateful again to be here, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Coach Brower, and why don't we invite Simon and Nick, since you guys are the captains. Mrs. Tanner has a presentation and she'll award that to you and then Mr. Williams can decide the best way to take a photograph of this group. We might have the best view from right here, Chris. You'll have to decide. Was there a third captain that I missed down the line? Sorry. Why don't you come on over as well?
And then, of course, you'd like, don't they? It takes every person on the team. So this is just so important that we complete this amazing task of congratulations to all of you.
Maybe we could space out, dug two rows and Chris, you could take it from the back there. Let's try to space out a little bit.
Why don't you four get on the back row? Let's do double rows.
You guys have never run this close to each other before.
A little more space.
She's taking the first one, so look at her. What you got, Ruth? Okay. Always chasing, huh, fellas? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Linford and Principal Swanson. The next item on our agenda will be public comment, and I'd like to briefly review the public comment procedures before we resume that portion of the agenda. The board will allow time for public comment at the beginning of each regularly scheduled board meeting, and that comment period shall not exceed 18 minutes with individual presentations limited to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized and invited to provide public comment by the presiding board members after the sign-ups. The presiding board member may hear public comments in any order or sequence and is not limited by arrangement on the sign-up sheets. Tonight, we'll have time for all the people who signed up for public comment, and that time period should not be used to air complaints concerning bidding, contracts, employment or personnel issues, to criticize or defame district employees or board members, or to make complaints for which other avenues of appeal exist. The board will not take comments regarding individual student education issues. Persons speaking to the board should address remarks to the presiding board member and may direct questions to the superintendent only or other board members upon approval. The board is unable by law to deliberate or take action on items raised during the comment period that is not otherwise on the board's agenda. So with that, we'll go ahead and proceed. Ms. Victoria over there will keep track of our time, and you'll hear a kind of a ding when your, your time is up, when you've hit that three-minute point. So let's go ahead and begin with Ms. Kira Wooton. If she's here or in the lobby, she can come in and, and take the podium. Thank you, Kira.
Hello, I am Kira Wooton, a junior from Vumont High School. I know we are all tired of hearing about COVID, and I am too, but the results of going back to four days leave something to be said. We need to work together whether we want to or not. It can't just be me, it can't just be teachers, it can't just be the school board. All of us must work side by side, metaphorically, to find a solution for this pandemic. The solution is the hybrid schedule. The number of COVID cases in Utah is climbing higher and higher. With the four-day schedule, in my English class, we do not have enough desks to socially distance. And I don't mean six feet socially distance, I mean around one or two feet. This means that two students have to sit in chairs with no desks. I understand the need for getting as much education as possible. However, four days a week is putting numerous amounts of students in quarantine. Whole schools are getting shut down. The switch to four days a week has ultimately led to keeping students from learning in person. Northridge has already been shut down. They had two days on being on the four-day schedule before they were shut down. My school has 11 active cases. I understand that students need stability. However, the majority of students I've talked to have already gotten used to the hybrid and are finding it difficult to switch back. Not only that, but having schools shut down at unknown times for two weeks is not exactly what I'd call stability. Some may argue that we should just increase the count of positive COVID cases in school before we shut them down from the previous number of 15. This will not solve the problem and will just cause COVID to spread faster and endanger more students. Four days a week is limiting students' futures. I'm currently taking college-level courses and working towards the letter of completion. So are countless others, like my cousin. The letter of completion requires college-level courses to be taken each year. Online schooling does not offer most of these AP and CE college-level courses. What little college-level classes they do offer do not have teachers and are just independent studying courses. Both my cousin and I are now considering to switching online. My sister has already made the switch. If we go online, my cousin and I won't be able to finish the letter of completion. I could lose countless scholarships and money. Why should students have to decide between their safety and their future? Going to four days a week is forcing students who are at high risk, like myself and my cousin who have asthma, students like my sister who have type 1 diabetes and many others, to switch to online. If we don't switch, we are risking our health by exposing ourselves to an unnecessary amount of students. How can students choose between their health and their quality of education? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Kira. Next, we'll have Mr. Richard Baggett.
I should just say amen to everything that she said because that's what I was gonna be talking about. So, first of all, I want you to know that education is very important in my home. My wife is a teacher, my son is working on his doctorate in education. He's a teacher at Harriman High School. My other daughter is, was a teacher at West Bountiful Elementary. All my kids graduated from college before they graduated from high school. So, education's important. So I'm not gonna diss on education. But I also understand a pandemic and a deadly pandemic this is. Having served in the military, working with chemical and biological weapons, I understand how this kind of stuff works. What I want to talk about though, actually, is at the beginning of the school board, school, I don't know who I'm supposed to be addressing, it says something about a board member.
You're fine, you can direct the comments to me or to the center of the, of the group.
But this school, this school district was supposed to, was required to submit a, a plan to the State Board of Education. And in that plan, it was the hybrid model. And in that plan, you also said that you would make adjustments based on facts and data on number of cases going up or down. It was supposed to reduce class sizes and to follow federal, state, county guidelines for safety. You would then make assessments occasionally and make adjustments based on facts and data. However, the observations were, as the cases went up, that you, two weeks into the, after everybody signed into it, all the teachers and everybody else said, yeah, my letter of intent is to come back, this is a good plan, you reneged and you lied on, on the commitment that you made to the teachers and staff in the school by going back to a full-up everybody in the classroom. And as she was saying, there's no way to properly distance. In addition to that, kids are coming, sorry. My mother-in-law died last week and we buried her on Friday, and I think maybe my wife might have given it to her picking up from somebody at school. But because you don't require any contact testing with the students, they go home, they stay home for a couple of days, they come back and they're still coughing. And there's no way to know exactly who has it and who doesn't, and there's no way to be able to trace and track that appropriately. So I just want to know why you lied to the teachers and the staff on, on the plan. I also have another question, why have you lied about making the adjustments based on facts and data? It was your plan that you submitted, and I'm just asking for some accountability as to why you haven't stuck with it. You know, facts and data, I'm an engineer, aerospace engineer for 40 years. Again, my family knows about facts and data. Kids are working on doctors. Why, and I also, one other question. I've called, I've called several times, I've called your office, I've called the district office many times. I've tried to talk to people, I get hung up on, and I don't have my phone calls returned, which is why I'm here tonight.
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Baggett?
Yes, I will. One last thing, there's a mom code going on about not testing and stuff like that. And the governor said, stay safe and stay home. I'm not asking for all or nothing, I'm not asking for a total shutdown. I'm just saying it's like, let's reassess this, look at it, let's stay safe, let's stay open, let's go back to the hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Our next comment will be from Jessica Margano Martinez.
Sorry. He just admitted to having COVID potentially in his house, so write that down. Okay. I'm here to talk about soft closure today. I personally know 25 people that have tested positive for coronavirus. Of those 25, all are residents of Utah, 18 are residents of Davis County, and 18 of, and of those 18, 12 of them live in my one gas station, one streetlight, tiny town of South Weaver. I probably personally know more that have contracted it, just haven't found out about them yet. One is 72 years of age and one is 74. One was a high schooler, two were junior hires, and three were elementary school-aged children. The rest were adults. Fortunately, only one has had to be hospitalized, and it wasn't the 70-year-olds. None have passed away. Based off of my personal knowledge of Utah residents, there is a 4% chance of hospitalization and 0% chance of death. Our elementary school has had a total of one case since going to four days in person. I know those numbers are not accurate beyond my scope of people I personally know, but those are the numbers I have personal experience with. 15 positive tests in a 2,000 population equates to below 1%. That number is too low, and I urge you to increase it before soft-closing any more schools. Also, I have an understanding that during Farmington High's soft closure, positives are still being counted. If you could please, someone explain the logic behind that, because they're not in school, so I would greatly appreciate it. Jordan School District just changed their shutdown trigger to 2%. In a school of 2,000, that would mean 40 cases, which is a much larger number than we are dealing with in a district whose numbers are much higher than ours in regards to cases and stuff. Let's talk days in person. Starting tomorrow, if my children were attending in person five days a week, they would attend a total of 130 days through the end of the year. With four-person in days a week, they would have attended 105 days. With hybrid, they would have attended 53 days, and my children follow on the Tuesday-Thursday schedule, so a lot of the Monday holidays don't equate into that number. To equate to my hy, to hybrid, my children's school will have to have a soft closure almost four times over the course of roughly seven months. In my opinion, those numbers show that four days in person at a minimum is a winning solution for our children. Onto my junior high student's grades. She has always been a near-straight-A student with an occasional B. Last term, she received two Ds, one C, two Bs, one A, and two Ps. Those were rough grades for her to swallow, seeing she's used to As. In closing, I ask that you, at a minimum, remain with the four days in person and raise the shutdown trigger number. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Our last comment will be from Mr. Nate Draxler.
Sorry, Ms. Mumford, can I jump in for just a second?
Yes.
You know, I had constituents with a similar question about why are positives still being counted during quarantine time? So maybe Mr. Zabakan could address that question during his COVID presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Draxler, go ahead and take the podium, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you. I would echo what Ms. Martinez just said. I would strongly advocate for a four-day school week. Our experience with the hybrid learning has been awful. The, the days when they're not in school and they're at home, our son, for example, is home alone, my wife and I are at work, he's at home trying to teach himself. He's a 16-year-old with ADHD. He's not capable of teaching himself. And there's no instruction or teaching going on on those days because the teacher's busy with the kids that are in class. There's no instruction. So, last week and, and early this week, when it was all online and there was actually Zoom calls or Teams calls and the teachers were instructing and teaching, was the first time really he's had actual teaching going on at our house. Today's the first day back at school for him, and it's the first time I've seen him excited about school all year. You guys probably saw, there was an article today, KSL News talked about Dr. Burks and Dr. Redfield, who's the director of the CDC, Dr. Burks, who's the Coronavirus Task Force Coordinator, both said kids need to go back to school. Those are, I don't know what more experts you need than the head of the CDC and the head of the White House Coronavirus Task Force, but they both said kids need to go back to school. The spread is not happening at school. If you want to talk, numbers and data, it's all published. The numbers are, we still have zero deaths from anyone aged zero to 24 in this state. It doesn't happen. They're not at risk. So, kids will pass it around, it's a virus, we know that, they will pass it around, they will get better. I think it's silly of us to think that we're gonna stop this or this is gonna go away. It's a virus, it's here to stay. We need to accept that fact, go back to school four days a week at least, go about our regular, it's not going away. It's here, it's a part of our life now. Coronavirus is here to stay. So we need to accept it, get our kids in school where they belong, because that's where they need to be, socially, emotionally, mentally, physically, they need to be in school. It's awful for these kids to be yanked back and forth all the time. And I would urge you to just make a decision and stick with it. Do four days a week, get these kids where they belong in school, being taught by teachers and not by themselves. My son can't teach himself, and I'm not there to teach him either, and I'm not a trained teacher. I, I, I love and respect teachers, they're so good at what they do, let's let them do their jobs. I shouldn't be teaching my son, I don't know how. I'm not capable of that. Okay? So, I shouldn't be expected to be teaching my son at home. I don't know how, I can't do that. That's not my training. So, they need to be in school, learning from professional teachers. And I would just urge you that you make that decision and stick with it, because that's what's best for our kids, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Draxler. We have time for two additional comments. If there's anyone who wasn't able to sign up for a comment, so anyone, anyone that's in the audience that would like to take that opportunity. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period then. Thank you for sharing your perspectives with us tonight. Board, at this time, we'll move forward on our agenda, and it looks like we've got some committee reports. We'll start with Ms. Marie Stevenson, if you want to update us on the foundation.
Hey, there's four or five items I'd like to share with you from the, our foundation meeting last week. The foundation will be partnering with the Student and Family Resources, can you hear through this? The foundation will be partnering with the Student and Family Resources Department to fund expanded hours for family service workers, counselors and staff during November and December. Good two months to extend this, so let's take advantage of that. The purpose of this partnership is to provide outreach for students and their families. The staff provide check-in and resource facilitation for students who have not engaged or attended school this year, who may be in a crisis. The foundation is committed to improving the social and emotional health of our students and providing resources that will increase their success. Also, the foundation has received a $25,000 racial equity and inclusion grant to students and families that are impacted by COVID-19. The grant will be used to provide emergency basic needs assistance to multicultural families, including but not limited to utilities, rent, transportation, food assistance and case management. That is a, that is a great grant that we received there. Foundation also received $30,000 to install touchless water bottle filling stations at our schools. We'll be able to install 80 to 90 stations at these schools, and it should bring each school up to at least two. So looking forward to those. Another is the partnership with, continued partnership with our incredible cities. And you heard about this one last month for the childcare assistance grants, that's being continued. And with the help of the following cities, Syracuse, North Salt Lake, West Bountiful, West Point, Woods Cross and Clinton, three additional cities are coming on board, and we have received $775,000 from those cities with some of their cares money to help these families. The last one is, I have been a recipient of this one as a teacher. Cash for classrooms and innovative grant applications are now open and are funding teachers' requests almost daily. To date, we funded more than $75,000 on supplies, equipment, materials that teachers need to ensure classrooms of excellence. So, all of our teachers that are streaming, or that might be here tonight, jump on, those Cash for Classrooms are, is a great, great program. Then I just wanted to remind too, that all employees in the district, this Friday from 10 to 5, the Freeport Building C5, our material giveaway. So if you need something in your classroom, notebooks, pencils, whatever you need, the foundation has supported this and is providing the foundation has supported this and is providing this free of charge to any employee in the district that needs it for work here in, in the district. So this Friday, 10 to 5, if you can break away on your lunch or have somebody cover your Zooms or whatever you need to do, but get out there and, or send somebody in your stead, C5, Building C5, and that's all I have from foundation, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. The next board report we have is from Ms. Bridget Gerard, who's sharing some USBA business and also a report on social and emotional learning.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with the Utah School Board Association. The annual USBA conference will be held January 7th, 8th, and 9th, and it will be held virtually this year. There are some advantages to this and, and that, one is that it will be free to any district that would like to participate. And there's already been a lot of great speakers and lined up and, and good classes and it's going to be really good. And it, they won't be full days, but they'll be a few hours for each day, starting Thursday night. This year, a new vice president will be elected from the single-region districts like ours. And each single-region district is asked to submit a nomination, if they would like to, from their district for this position by the end of November. So the nominations will be taken and the vote, vote will take place during the meeting, the virtual meeting. We've also been asked to submit the name of a board member from our district to represent us on the USBA Board of Directors by the first part of January. New board members workshops will be sponsored by USBA in two different locations and Superintendent Newey is going to be one of the presenters there. So that would be really great to hear from him. Next year's Day on the Hill has been canceled thus far, but there are a lot of other ideas going around about ways that we can get our legislators more involved in our classroom and they haven't been decided upon, upon, but we will work on that. Also, I have been asked to put a plea out there for any ideas that any of you may have for webinars for the USBA to put on. We're looking for ideas for the next year. If you have any great ideas or something you would like to learn about, let us know and you can turn that into me or to Richard Stoll. Lastly, USBA will continue to sponsor monthly MBA challenges and just a reminder that the deadline for the MBA award, the Master Board Award, which will be presented at the annual conference, is December 1st. So that's coming right up, so get to work on that. Okay. Now I, I wanted to report on our social and emotional learning that, program that's going on in Davis School District. We had a wonderful meeting on October 20th with all of our district personnel and our community partners. And just wanted to mention that we have amazing leadership in our district here with Kathleen Cronister, Devon Healy, and Jessica Buckway. I just wanted to remind everyone of the SEL, Social Emotional Learning Vision Statement. And that is this, employees and students acquire and effectively apply personal and social attitudes, behaviors, and skills necessary to lead happy and fulfilling lives. So the key goal for this year is to develop and implement a dynamic community SEL communication plan using common language. So the purpose is the, of this is that we can all be on board, use the same language and not repeat efforts, but to coordinate strategies going on in the community as well as our school district. You know, we talk so much about culture in our district and culture is such an important part of our strategic plan. And social and emotional learning initiatives are so much a part of that culture, so it's just really important. Social emotional learning can help students and adults, and think about this as we think about what we've been going through with the pandemic, help students and adults adapt to their new environments, all the changes, manage new expectations, and foster a sense of belonging. So it's proven to be very, very crucial as we've been going through some difficult times. We have four areas of focus. One is the foundational support and plan, so we're building awareness, commitment, and ownership. Second area of focus is to strengthen adult SEL. Third, promote SEL for students. And fourth, practice continuous improvement. So what we have been working on for the past couple of years is, or a year and a half, is that foundational support and plan and then strengthening our adult, adult SEL skills. So our focus through 2022 will be to support school, and that's been district-wide. So for now through 2022, our focus will be to support school social emotional learning plans in all these areas of focus. So the next steps for our schools is to implement their strategies and focus on their staff well-being and promote the SEL program for students and then practice continuous improvement in these areas. We have a school assessment and a walkthrough tool to measure how we're doing in this. And I am just so excited about what I have seen and the great work that's being done and, and it's how it's helping and improving the mental health of our students and our, the adults in our district, doing amazing things. And like I said, especially important during this difficult time that we've been going through. Ms. Cronister wanted me to remind everyone about the optional training that is open to anyone for brain breaks, for adult self-care and for use in the classroom. And you will have an email you can refer to, but it is this Friday from 1:30 to 3, or Friday, December 4th from, from 1:30 to 3. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you for those board committee reports. We recognize there's lots of other committee work happening by board members in other areas and we look forward to that in future meetings. We'll move now to consent items. Board members, are there any specific items you'd like moved to business? Oh, sorry, I, I got excited to jump to business items. Let's move back to number two. We'd love to have the superintendent make his report and then we'll also have a sub, a portion of that by Superintendent Zabakan.
Thank you, Vice President Mumford, I was excited too, so no problem. Want to again recognize Mr. Streit, I have a long history of working with him as a colleague in Weaver District. And I can tell you, we, we have got a, a great board member. And we're lucky to have Brent in that position, a real example over a multi-year career of what an educator should be and a, a great caring person, so we're glad to have you, Brent, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Also want to recognize the board members who have prevailed in the election cycle. We are so grateful for all of our board members and the work and time and effort put in on behalf of the children in Davis School District. We have a, a tradition of excellence in a school board. And we appreciate our opportunity to work with you and commend those that have had, had the privilege of an election cycle. And thank you for all of your efforts. Want to just give a couple reports. A lot of great things have been happening, as you've seen Dr. Linford do the presentations tonight of, of some of the great things happening in the, in the district. As we've moved to a four-day week for several weeks in the elementaries and recently in the secondaries, seeing great things happen there with, with our teachers as well as students. It's an extremely stressful time, as you see the caseload rise outside of school and, and in our schools as well, we have more cases. Just wanted to review a couple things and Mr. Zabakan will, will hit on, on most of that. We, as you know, Northridge was, is now on a soft closure of two weeks. Syracuse will begin that, I believe, on Thursday, Mr. Zabakan, is that correct? With the teacher prep day on Thursday. So, so the, the two-week period will begin tomorrow at Syracuse High. And Farmington High will be, today was their first day back in session, correct, Mr. Zabakan? After their two-week soft closure. During that time, of course, we will postpone or cancel all student activities. And as you remember, board, one of the things that, that are critical to remember, that is with the exception of during that time, two-week time period of a, a state-sanctioned Utah high school activities event during that timeframe. So, so that, that will provide the exception to that rule, otherwise there will be no activities taking place at that time. So with that, we again thank the board for your constant support and with that, I'll turn the time to Mr. Zabakan.
I want to put this up on your screen so you guys can all see this. Vice President Mumford, esteemed board members, Superintendent Newey, it's a pleasure again to speak with you. I do look forward to the day when I have an opportunity to talk with you about something other than COVID-19 and I believe it'll happen before I get really old. I want to give you some updates on the dashboard, on soft closure, as well as on rapid testing, those will be the three topics. I want to speak very briefly about the dashboard, you can read the numbers, there's no reason to, to belabor those. But I do want to talk about its structure. Those, our dashboard is updated each week on Monday, typically Monday afternoon to Monday evening, depending when the Health Department gets those numbers to us. Those numbers come directly from the Health Department. And those numbers reflect the data as of late Saturday night previous of the Monday. Okay, so they aren't Monday's new numbers. We do those numbers from the state, from the Health Department each week and the numbers that we post on Monday are numbers that they give to us sometime during Monday that they stopped their date as of that Saturday night. So really, the purpose of the dashboard more than anything is to give both the board and our community a global look at where we are, both within that previous week as well as where we've been since the beginning of the school year. It's not the intention of that to be able to provide a day-by-day analysis. The Health Department does not have the wherewithal in terms of staffing to be able to provide that kind of analysis across the board, so that, that's what we see in the dashboard. Consequently, we'll remember back a month ago, we talked about the letter that went home and we determined that it was important for that letter to be sent every time there's a positive case to every family member in that school, as well as to every board member and to the superintendency. And in the first paragraph of that letter, it will state there's been one or more cases and as of this moment, we have X amount of active cases. There's been ambiguity when people look at the dashboard and look at that letter and going, they are different, what's wrong with your numbers? Nothing is wrong with our numbers. Those numbers that you're getting from the school are reflecting what's happening in that school as of the day the letter has been sent out. The dashboard is that thumbnail sketch that is taken that Saturday night, previous to the Monday of it being published on our website. So those numbers will be different. You may also hear, but wait, I have children in two different schools. And in my elementary school, that letter and the total numbers is less than what's on the website, but in my junior high, it's more. So how can it be more and less? That's relative, relative to the 14 days for every positive case. Each 14 days, the case falls off the back end and no longer is counted toward that active 14-day case count. So it is entirely possible that one school could report a number going down from the dashboard and another school report an ascending number. That is very consistent with the way that we are reporting the cases, but I do know that you're getting questions in terms of that ambiguity. And my hope is that that clears up the ambiguity between the parent letter and what is on the dashboard. Remote learning, we, we, as, as Superintendent explained, we have experienced now in soft closure and going to remote learning. I want to remind you of a few things that we spoke about as we made the motion last board meeting to implement USBE standards of 3 and 15. When we go into soft closure, we suspend all activities except for those Utah State High School Activities Association activities, sanctioned activities that have a sanctioned event in that 14-day window. That's an important nuance. They must have a sanctioned event inside of those 14 days during the soft closure. If they do not have a sanctioned event, they cannot meet during the soft closure. And that, that's, 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 again, it's a nuance, but it's very important to folks who are in those activities. So it's why can one school or one activity be practicing and the other activity being denied the opportunity to practice? The difference would be with both of those, if they're both High School Activities Association sanctioned event, one activity has a sanctioned event, a meet, a competition, an adjudication, and the other does not have anything in those 14 days. If there is no activity, then that activity is suspended for those two weeks. Also during our, our soft closure, it is different than what we had in the spring. We are following the bell schedule or a modified bell schedule, because sometimes if you have, many of our secondary schools will have an advisory period that it's impractical to have remotely, so they may provide a bit of an alternative schedule, but we are expecting, we're, we're taking attendance. Grades count the same way, it's school, but you're here and I'm there. So we're running the same structure as school during those two weeks as we would have if we were a person-to-person. And finally, in the building, we limit the building to administration, secretarial staff, a counselor, and our custodial staff. Everyone else is told to go home and work remotely. Teachers do have the opportunity on permission of the principals to come into the building to be able to transact or teach some classes, because there are some situations where that teacher needs within their classroom to be able to actually do their class. They would ask the principal and they would get that opportunity. So that's, that's what's happening with remote learning in terms of-
One thing, as Mr. Zabakan transitions to his next slide, that I want to stress with, with, with the board. And again, thank you for your support in the four-day week in terms of what teachers are, have to accomplish on the fifth day and are accomplishing. We're going to continue as long as we have cases and as long as we have students that, that will be excluded from school due to testing positive and/or quarantine, we are going to have to provide for those students an enhanced degree of remote learning. And the Friday time for that is, is invaluable to students. There's also a lot of enrichment time that's taking place in small groups as well as individual students. So we're seeing great results from that in terms of what teachers are accomplishing, what administrators and people in the building are able to do to provide for students that are having challenges with, with the virus as well as the, the things that staff members can accomplish.
Thank you, Superintendent Newey. When we return from remote, remote learning, there's again, since now we've had this opportunity, there's been some ambiguity and I'd like to address that. There's been the question that has been raised a number of times and, and from some of our patrons as well as some of our board members. And we had this one Farmington, it was our test case. They were out and we kept getting letters, how can you have a positive case in a school that is no longer in session? Here's the, here are the Health Department rules in terms of the questions they ask, the question they ask a positive case from anyone, but specifically of, of a student. When they, when they get their positive test, they ask the individual, have you been in a school or worked in a school for more than 15 consecutive minutes at any time in the past 14 days? That's the question. That question is yes. Then that person goes as the positive case for the school. So we went out at Farmington, we've been, we had been out for two weeks. Any student from Farmington High School who tested positive in that window was asked that very question. And obviously, the answer to that question was yes. Two weeks ago, I was in school. That then became a positive case and we wanted to continue to report that to our community, that there are still students in our school who are still testing positive in spite of the fact that we are out. So parents of Farmington High students and parents of Northridge for the next two weeks and parents of Syracuse for the next two weeks will continue to get those letters if we have positive cases. Now the next question is, does that mean, when you return to school, as Farmington has, that they may actually not be able to start? Because they'll, they will have more, we just got a letter that said 16 cases the day before they're going to open. Does that mean they will not open? No, it does not, because here's what we've, we've worked with the Health Department. We have made the choice along with the Health Department that although a school will have those cases, we see a two-week, a two-week soft closure as a reset. And why 14, everything with COVID ends up being about 14 days, it's a 14-day quarantine, quarantine. We see it as a two-week recess, reset. So when we brought Farmington back, their number for Farm- So when we brought Farmington back, their number for Farmington went to zero. When Northridge comes back after their two weeks, their number will be zero. When Syracuse comes back, their number will be zero. Although, parents have been getting letters during the soft closure that speaks to positive cases, that is a correct number, because positive cases are happening, and we do think it's important for our community and parents to know that. Those students who are positive are isolated, they will not be coming back to school until the Health Department releases them. So they don't come back after, all because the school's open, they still have their isolation period, but we do think it's important for the community, no, it's still in your community. So when they come back, it will be zero. The only way it would not be zero is if the school had a co-curricular event that had competition, so they're practicing in the window, they're attending that activity, and if they get positive cases, those will count as cases when the school opens, because they are participating in a school-sanctioned activity. So that is why the number continues. And here's, it gets back to a numbers game. The Health Department, because you'll look oftentimes at the state coronavirus website, if you go there, they have a school section, and you can look at district by district. They don't break down by schools, but they break down by district. And you will see numbers of the active cases and total cases. They don't look at quarantine, just positive, active, that's 14 days, and total cases, anyone who's had it. The number that the Health Department is reporting to the state is that number that is inclusive of all those cases that happened while we're on soft closure, because they still are community connections. So the Health Department has to report those. But for our reporting, when a school comes back on soft closure, they will come back at zero, and we reset, and we start again. Finally, and this is pretty exciting, we worked with the Health Department, the Health Department got the rapid tests, about 10,000 rapid tests, they're 15-minute, they're still nasal tests, they're not the long nasal test to touch your brain, it's just to get to the back of your nasal cavity. It's a 15-minute test. You take it, you wait 15 minutes, it's either positive or negative. We were able to access, from the Health Department, 10,000 of those. And we are, today was our first day, our test day, we had eight folks come in, eight test cases. We're doing it out at Freeport Center, at the bus garage, so that we can have it indoors. As we're thinking about it, we have to assume that everyone coming to test with us is positive. And so we have to treat it as such. So we're keeping our clients in their cars from the moment they come in to register until the moment they leave with their test results. They never get out of their cars. All of our nurses are in full PPE, so we're doing everything we can to maintain the safety of that site. We are using rapid testing at this time only for those individuals who were quarantined by the school district, student or staff. I want to say that again, because that's an important, this isn't a community-open testing site. This is only for individuals who were quarantined, students or staff, by the school district. When they are quarantined, their quarantine letter will include on the backside that in seven days, you are eligible, not required, but you are eligible to come to this testing site, 7 to 10 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, come to the testing site, fill out the appropriate paperwork, get the test, wait 15 minutes, get your result, and if your result is negative, then you get a form we will take back to your school, and you're automatically able to come back to school. What we're excited about this is it does provide an opportunity for kids not to have to be out for 14 days, if in fact they are negative. No, it is not, but great question. It is not by appointment, it's a drive-up. The bus garage, you've been out there, it's gigantic, so you're inside, you may be there for 15, 20 minutes, but we believe right now, our numbers aren't such that we see ourselves having two- or three-hour wait. Again, today was our first day, we worked out some of the kinks in the last two days. We believe, again, it's an opportunity to bring our students and staff back to school in a quarantine situation, safely sanctioned by the Health Department, in terms of the seven days is the first, the earliest that we can test and be confident in the test that people are in fact not positive when they return. I really want to thank the Health Department, Scott Zigich, Margot Hill, and our nurses. Our nurses didn't sign up to do this work. This is not, you know, just doing a throat swab and checking for strep throat. This is real serious work that our nurses are willingly putting themselves into some degree of danger. We've done everything we can to make sure that the area is sterile, that people are staying in their cars, that they have minimal contact with potential patients, but they have been willing all along to say, "Yeah, we want to do this, because we want to do everything we can to keep schools safe and to keep kids in school." Are there any questions?
Actually, I had a couple of questions. So for the rapid testing on the seventh day, you can test and potentially come back to school, does that also, for when there's a soft closure, could you do a rapid test on the seventh day and return early from that?
Thank you for asking that, because I'm sure many people are thinking that exact same thing. The difference between a soft closure and a quarantine, soft closure is a reset of an entire community. Because of the 15, and 15 in a high school, just to give you an idea, that's about 680 cases per 100,000. The governor's high threshold is 330, so when we get to 15 in a high school, we're twice the governor's threshold. So that's a community reset, no one has specifically been quarantined. Quarantine's different, because that's done through contact tracing, and we have the reason to suspect that you have in fact been infected, which is why we put you on quarantine. And that's why you have the 14 days. So that's the difference, but thank you for asking that, because I'm sure many thought it.
But also, there'd be nothing to come back to if your whole school's out, right?
Right, it's closed, yeah, it's closed.
So as far as students being counted as positive, even though the whole school's on soft closure, it's, I was thinking you might be referring to students who came into the building for 15 minutes during that two-week time. You're referring to students who were in school before it got closed for remote, and then during the two-week period come down with COVID, having possibly infected others before they got the symptoms and the illness, did I get that right?
Precisely, that is exactly right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Gerard?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that's been done, these will be big improvements, especially the rapid test. Will you send us a copy of these?
I will, I'll send a copy of these slides via email.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitz?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I would like to know, do we have cases of, we know of the schools that have been closed down, do we have classrooms that have been closed down?
We have not yet. We have had co-curricular activities that have been closed down, but no classrooms as of this moment.
Okay, thank you. And another question I have, it hasn't really specifically to do with what you've presented today, I just have a question about the trace, that tracing ability. Do we, because we hear a lot about whether we should be open or not, and as I ponder that, about whether or not I'm putting people in danger or not, and which danger is the more concerning one, but do we, as a person is found positive and they go, are their contact where they got it? I would just love to know, it's hard to know whether the schools are the problem, we know there's a lot about the social thing, but so, is that documented of whether it appears that the contact was in class or whether it's outside of class?
It's, there's no way to be able to say, "Here's where you caught COVID." There are ways we'll say, "Here's the places that are potential," and we can look at people through contact tracing that you may have infected, but to be able to say then you were infected at school, at home, on the ball team, that's conjecture. There's no way, in terms of epidemiology, to prove, "Here's where you got it." But I do think you bring up a very important point, and that is that when what we see in schools, we see in our communities. Today, we had 252 positive cases in Davis County today alone. This isn't just a school problem. I think what I really want to say to any school, and so that you as board members know, what happened with our three schools is no indictment on those schools for what those schools have done. Those schools have practiced the Big Five to the best of their ability, they've ensured as much as they can, the distancing that is possible when we are full, they've ensured that masks are being worn, we are ensuring that their sanitation stations are being used. The schools are doing all they can. It's not that one would say you have a dirty school, or perhaps that school didn't live up to its agreement. I can without question say all three of those schools did.
Yeah, so, you know, we just, I saw an email today that said something about, yeah, so we've been in class for two days, and look, we've already closed in a school, although you'd have to say, well, they got the disease before school was opened, and so, you know, that's not a viable thing. But I know that the Utah Health Department is actually very concerned. I was in a conversation, a meeting today with someone from them, and they are realizing and are concerned that most of their evidence is outside social, in between the ages of 14 to 24, and they're planning to do a big social, get the word out and say, "Why aren't people wearing masks, and what are we doing?", and saying that the real emphasis in the state needs to be on personal responsibility, and not so much focused necessarily on whether the schools are being safe or not, but that we all need to practice individual safety.
Our communities can certainly do all they can to help us keep our schools in session. This is a community, this is a community issue, and I think as a community, we do this all together, we'll have good results.
Ms. Gerard?
I'm glad that this has been brought up, because I spoke to a parent today that asked about this very thing, and wondered if we could put another reminder on our website, you know, that we need the help from the community to keep our schools open, that we're doing the best we can. And I know that that was on the website at one time, and just asked that maybe we do a reminder for our community to help with these measures, because our schools are really working hard, our administrators and teachers and all of our staffers is working so hard, and just asking for some community help. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Thank you. I think that these testing opportunities really highlight our district's commitment to testing, taking the appropriate mitigation, and really working with the state to follow the guidelines. And so, there's a lot of concerns out there that testing may not be happening, but we're trying to do everything possible to facilitate that, and make sure it's easy for students and staff to access that, and have as little impact on their learning as possible, but recognizing the importance of testing as part of public health. So thank you. Okay, we are ready to move to the consent items. So board members, if there are any items that you would like to pull from the consent items and move to business, could you please indicate that at this time? Okay, it looks like, oh, did you have something, Ms. Tanner?
I was just going to make a motion to accept consent items one through six.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Tanner and a second by Ms. Stevenson to accept items one through six. Any discussion? We'll proceed then. All in favor for the motion to accept consent items one through six, say aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous. Okay, we'll move forward then with business items. The first item there is the board calendar. Before we bring that up for a motion, are there any changes that people have noticed? I know there were a couple suggestions that were caught today. Ms. Tanner, do you want to?
Yeah.
For the January 2021, and January 5th, and January 19th, as board meetings. And just as all of those were part of our basically, our meetings for 2021, we just released in transcribing those ones. So I want to make a motion to approve the board calendar with the addition of the January board business meeting and workshop. I make a motion that we approve the calendars for November, December, and January with the addition of January 5th and 19th, is that clear, Ms. Tanner?
Correct. I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Ms. Stevenson, a second by Ms. Gerard. Any discussion? Okay, so we'll go forward with the motion. All in favor of approving the board calendar with the addition of board members for the first of the next month. Say aye.
Aye.
And to you also, approval for the board calendar. The second item is head start early head start reports. That was for Ms. Robinson. I can refer to the superintendent, give more information from the head start group. Other than what's in that?
I think the reports are, they were in the pack, that there's no changes on, I think Dr. Oscar has presented on it and ready for a motion.
Okay, board, is our motion on that?
I'll move, I'll make the motion to approve the head start, early head start reports.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Ms. Fitz and a second by Ms. Tanner. Any discussion on the board head start, early head start reports? There's no discussion there. We'll take a vote, all in favor of the motion to approve the head start, early head start minutes budget, and any reports, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's also unanimous. Number three, the next one is our school calendar that's been out for public survey and, and the administration still has a lot of work to do as they're processing that feedback and some work to finalize the calendar for first readings. I'd like to, and a motion to table that. Is there somebody that would like to make that motion?
I move that we table the motion for the 2021, 22 school calendar first reading.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Ms. Tanner and a second by Ms. Gerard, making a comeback for our December business meeting. So that's a motion to table the 2021, 2022 school calendar that was out for first reading. Any discussion on that motion? Thank you for the vote. All in favor of approving my motion to table, and number three, school calendar first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's all on this one. Next, we'd like to write Mr. Ophelia, two policies, first being HR-004.
That's great. Vice President Mumford, superintendent, members of the board, thank you for this time. Board members will remember, our last meeting, we had a policy that came up about the recruiting policy from our last meeting. It was a reflection of continuing changes the state board was making to how non-traditional teachers were licensed. This is a continual adaptation we're making to this policy here. It's in keeping with that change in compliance with the new state board rule. It's on first and final, and we recommend its approval.
I'll make motion that we approve HR-004 employee discipline and dismissal policy. Second.
Okay, so another motion by Ms. Stevenson, a second by Ms. Fitz. Is there any discussion on this policy? Okay, it looks like there's no further questions, so go ahead. And with the motion to the board, HR-004, approving, disband and dismissal policy, with a motion by Ms. Stevenson, a second by Ms. Fitz. All in favor of that policy change?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Mr. Ophelia, the next one, 4I-006.
Sure, this is the accreditation policy. We used to have two accreditation commissions, they've since merged, so this is a reflection of that. It's now called the Northwest Association of Accredited Schools. And you'll see that the policy reflects now, there's, under 2.1, there's a way for credit to be taken at face value, and then 2.2 is pointed to Section 3, which says, "Here's the policy, how we accept credits when it's not taken at face value." We recommend that it's approved, it's on first and final.
Fourth, is there a motion to approve by 4I-006, which deals with credit evaluation standards and guidelines?
I don't think so, the changes we need to 4I-006, credit evaluation standards and guidelines.
Second.
Thank you. Another motion by Ms. Tanner and a second by Mr. Eckersley on the policy 4I-006. Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Fitz?
Yeah, I just wondered whether there's a wrong word, if there's a typo. In 2.1, the word alternations is there, and it seems like it's supposed to be alteration, not alternation.
We'll take over that, and we'll make sure if it's scripted or not.
Make sure, because there's two different meanings of that word, so I just want to make sure, to read that to alteration, because I was trying to figure out, what are you saying? What would happen there without alteration, without, is it without change? So I didn't know how to read that word that way.
Thank you. So that's a nice, similar change, you can probably just correlate with the state language. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, and I just had a question, not on the changes that are being made, but just to educate myself more. In 3.4, it talks about the credit evaluation committee, meeting four times, or at least scheduling meetings four times a year. I just wondered, who, do we have this committee in place, and who's on it? And are they meeting, like, how many requests are they getting per year approximately to evaluate credits?
That committee is meeting four times a year. It's headed up by Matt King in teaching and learning, and school year 18, 19, there were 19 requests. were 19 requests. School year 19, 20, there were 25 requests.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ophelia. So we have a motion and a second to approve 4I dash 006 Credit Evaluation Standards and Guidelines. All in favor of that?
Aye.
That one approves unanimously as well. Last, Ms. Ophelia.
The only change here is that we're updating the, the amount we can charge for the printed page in a grammer request. Uh, in 1991, it was 10 cents. Up until this change, it's still 10 cents. Uh, we figured we could, we could up that a little bit. It, it would match the current cost at the Governor's Office for a grammar request printed page. It's on first and final, and we recommend its approval.
Okay, so this one is on the first and final. Board, is there a motion to accept 10CR dash 101 Governmental Records Access and Management Act?
I move, uh, that we accept, uh, or that we approve, uh, 10CR 101 Government Record Access and Management Act, which is a grandma, and that we do that, um, that we, we reflect the same charge that the Governor's Office is doing.
I'll second. So there's a motion by Mr. Eckersley, a second by Ms. Tanner, to approve 10CR dash 101 regarding grandma requests and the pricing for those records to make it consistent with the Governor's Office. Any discussion on that item? Ms. Phipps?
Can I ask whether, is, is the charge per page the only charge for someone making a grandma thing? Is there a charge for the labor for the staff's time? Is it just simply paying for the per page?
There is. Uh, in modern requests, we don't have to print pages out as often. Um, the other charges we can do is after the first 15 minutes, we can charge for the amount of time it takes for the lowest paid individual that can do the work of, of sifting through the records to put it together.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions before we proceed with the motion? Okay, so there's a first and a second, um, for 10CR dash 101 Governmental Records Access and Management Act, known as grandma. All in favor of the motion to approve those changes?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ophelia. Okay, last item on our agenda this evening is board reports, and we'll go ahead and start with our student board members. Sophia had something prepared, and then Matthew let me know if you want to jump in with anything.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so part of my duties as a student representative is to just be aware of issues or current events that are happening in my school, um, and a few items of note that I'd like to bring up. Um, so I go to Bountiful High, and there have been several community mascot meetings that have been held, um, during the past month, um, where members of the public can go to the school and discuss their viewpoint, um, present it to the principal, who will make the final decision in a few months. Um, I wasn't able to attend any of these, but I have been able to visit with some of my classmates who have gone and just get a general sense of the general viewpoints that are being discussed and brought up there. Additionally, today, I was able to attend a lunch with the principal activity, um, where several members of the senior class meet and eat lunch with our school principal and discuss strengths, weaknesses, issues that are going on in the school. Um, some of the topics that we discussed today included, um, how teachers could better implement Canvas, um, for assignments so that it wouldn't be so confusing for students. We also talked about concerns over the length of school lunch and, um, how to better implement and encourage total distancing with the return to four days. And we also talked about the continuation of school sports through the winter, um, despite current COVID conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. That's great to know that you're having those dialogues at the school and involving students. I really appreciate knowing that. I'm going to jump in just because my board report kind of relates to Sophia's, and then we'll go down the line and make sure each board member gets a chance. I also, um, have been following the mascot issue at Bountiful High because it's in part of the area that I represent, and I took the opportunity to ta- attend one of those listening sessions, and just wanted to share what an excellent format that was. I think people felt very comfortable and, um, the opportunity to, it alternated between both sides of the issues, and people were able to share their opinion. There was a significant amount of time set aside that evening, and everybody that wanted to share had the opportunity. So those listening sessions are just one component of the process, but I just wanted to report that that process is flowing smoothly, and there's good avenues for communication for community members and for students. So we look forward to seeing that completely resolved in the next couple months, as Sophia indicated. Um, President Robinson and I were able to visit Oak Hills Elementary last week, and that was a great visit. Um, we had a opportunity to visit several different classrooms at different age levels and see the way teachers are implementing reading strategies, using technology, addressing individual needs, and looking at the data so that they can address some of the, the learning challenges that we faced during COVID. So that was a really productive visit for us as a board, and we appreciate Principal Page and Ms. Geisler that are leading out in that school community. Another great opportunity I had recently was attending Bountiful Elementary hosted a celebration of success during their Friday, um, faculty time, and that was just a great opportunity at the end of the term for teachers to share something that was personally meaningful for them and for their colleagues to honor one another. And so I love seeing the way that principals are finding ways to recognize their faculty and, and some of the creativity and innovation that's happening during this time. Also attended some equity trainings with faculties, and then I wanted to highlight the choral concert I went to at Wood's Cross High School. I'm just so impressed with the administration and whether it's coaches or arts department chairs, the way they are carefully proceeding with COVID protocols. There were safe seating, everything just flowed really smoothly. Everyone that I talked to that evening felt really confident about the way the concert was conducted. So I appreciate the vigilance that's happening out there so that we can prioritize learning and safety and still keep the activities that are important to our kids' social and emotional health. So that's my board report. Um, let's start down with Ms. Phipps and go ahead and, and just go down the line.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to pass. I have nothing to share today.
Thank you. Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, as I, as I visited in the schools the last couple of weeks, um, saw some good and happy, uh, students and teachers, but I wanted to, I had kind of addressed the issue of parent-teacher conferences, and that was part of my purpose. That's been going on the last couple of weeks in our district. Got a lot of positive feedback from, um, conferences, and, um, they were being held in Zoom, in-person, and some on phone calls. And parents and teachers alike were both very happy and content with it, and a lot of the teachers have suggested to me, we might want to look at that after COVID, if, if there is ever an after COVID, but, um, we'll, we'll look at that. Cheryl, I didn't report on this, but Cheryl and I both attended a Community That Cares meeting, um, and Jess Bigler runs that from Davis Behavioral Health, and she does a great job. I'd like to just do a shout out to, to them and all that they do for our community because they are on top of a lot of things, and it's, um, great to be a part of that and, and see all that's going on in, in that area. Um, also, I'm looking forward to the Sunburst and remind the board about the Sunburst Board meeting this, next Tuesday, and I think that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Gerard?
Uh, I also had on my list to, um, share how much I've enjoyed being involved with the Community That Cares, um, in the Leighton community, um, and Jess and, and their team. They're doing a great job, and it is just great to see, uh, community members come together and do everything they can to improve their communities. And, um, ju- just like, um, my report on the, uh, social, emotional learning, it's just great to have community members working together with the school district. Um, and, you know, we can't, we can't do it on our own. We need the help of community members. So it's great to be involved in these, um, organizations and committees that involve not only school district personnel, but community members that, that truly do care about our families and our communities. And I just, uh, wanted to also mention that I've had the opportunity to, to go to some sporting events, and I have been so impressed with how our, um, school staff is working so hard. They've spaced people out on the bleachers, um, only those that have a ticket can attend, and, um, masks are required, and I'm, I'm just, and, and the cleaning that's going on, I'm just so impressed with, with how everyone is working very hard to, as you said, Ms. Mumford, um, be able to provide those activities of enrichment that, um, our students really need. So I've been impressed with that and, and grateful for what everyone's doing, how hard they're working.
Uh, yes. Just wanted to report that Davis High Football, it will be going into the quarterfinals this Friday at 6:00 PM, and congratulate them to making it this far. Also, um, the Farmington High School Band won, marching band, won 5A state championships, and this is back-to-back state championships for Farmington High. And I attended, uh, equity training at, at Davis High School and was impressed with that.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Mr. Eckersley?
Um, I've brought this up before, but I've always been very impressed, uh, with, uh, the arts programs in the Davis School District, and I was able to, to attend the, uh, Leighton Band Concert last week, and they did such an excellent job. But I, I also know that we have many other bands and choral groups and, and orchestras throughout, uh, arts groups throughout our, our school district that just do such an excellent job, and appreciate those, those teachers, instructors. Um, not only do they do a good job, uh, teaching the arts to our students, but they, in many cases, become, um, role models to those students and, and somebody that the, that the students look up to and, and, um, help them in their growing up process. Um, I have a couple of times been critical of some of our teams not wearing their masks outside, uh, but I want to change that to a positive because one of those teams that I noticed, uh, was Leighton's cross-country team. And, uh, this is not to, to diss their cross-country team, but in past years, they have not really competed that well in, in cross-country. Um, I read the paper, uh, they've never placed highly, uh, they've never had any winners that have placed highly, and so I was, when I watched them practice this summer, I noticed that they had some new coaches, I, I assumed they were new, and that they were doing things that I've never seen the cross-country team, uh, do before. And I said to myself, I'm going to watch them because I'll bet they do a lot better this year than what they've ever done before. And by golly, their, their girls' cross-country placed very high in state, and they had, one of their girls took first place in, in the state cross-country meet, and so I just wanted to mention that and congratulate them on doing such a, a great job in their cross-country program.
Thank you. Well, it's been a good night. We've been able to conduct a lot of business, and it sounds like there's really excellent things happening in classrooms and programs across our district. So huge thank you to our employees and, and the families who are part of all those great successes and, and a continued commitment to keep working and, and making adjustments, improvements as we go forward. Superintendent, last words.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mumford, that, that jogged my memory as we were going down the line there. Mueller Park won the junior high volleyball championship for, I think, at least the second consecutive year, and, uh, did a great job with that, uh, thanks to Dr. Best and, and our directors that, uh, have worked, again, kind of, as, as mentioned by several board members, it's a, everything becomes harder in the era of COVID and, uh, but providing, uh, activities and, and as much education as we can is a, a vital thing for our students.
Thank you. I think with that, we're ready to call it a night. Is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I move we close this meeting.
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Tanner, a second by Ms. Stevenson, all in favor of closing this meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you to the audience as well.